Okay. All right, it's, um, we ready to begin?
Yes.
Uh huh, okay. Um, oh, I believe Councilman Spiller is walking in, so we'll give him a second. Oh, here he is. And Mr. Russo, Councilman, okay, great. Okay. I, um...
Shaun and Bo.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. This is a regular council, regular meeting of the council of the township of Montclair. Notice of this meeting has been provided to the Montclair Times, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. Notice has also been posted on the bulletin board in the municipal building. At this time, we'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'd like to take this moment to do, have a moment of silence for Chief Gardner and, and Sheriff Ryan. Before we begin, I want to, um, to thank my, oh, oh, well, do roll call first, Linda, sorry.
Deputy Mayor Schlager.
Here.
Mayor Jackson.
Present.
Councilor Baskerville.
Present.
Councilor Hurlock.
Present.
Councilor McMahon.
Here.
Councilor Russo.
Present.
Councilor Spiller.
Present.
Okay, thank you. I just want to take this minute to thank everybody for giving me the opportunity to be deputy mayor this past year. This is my last council meeting with that title, so the mayor has graciously asked me to, um, to run the meeting, and I'm happy to do that. So, we'll begin tonight. Great job, Robyn. Oh, thank you, thank you.
Great job.
Um, thank you. That's very kind, thank you. At this time, we have a, we'd like to approve the minutes. There's been presented to us the minutes of June 12th, 2018. Are there any corrections or additions? Second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. We'd like to, at this time as well, we have a proclamation in memoriam for John W. Gardner, and I'd like to ask Mayor Jackson to do that.
Would members of the family and members of the Montclair Fire Department please come Thank you very much. I'm going to read the proclamation. This is in memoriam of John W. Gardner, the great chief of our, the fire department. Whereas the council of the township of Montclair notes with sadness the passing of John W. Gardner, retired fire chief and the longest-serving member of the Montclair Fire Department. And whereas longtime, a longtime resident of Montclair and Verona, John W. Gardner was a graduate of Immaculate Conception High School, served in World War II as a bomber pilot, and retired from the United States Air Force Reserve as a lieutenant colonel. And whereas John W. Gardner joined the Montclair Fire Department as a probationary firefighter in 1945, and rising through the ranks, was appointed as a firefighter in November 1946, lieutenant in 1956, captain in 1961, deputy chief in 1963, assistant fire chief in 1980. Following then, Chief Alfred Ferrucci, John W. Gardner served as a fire chief from 1984 until his retirement in 1990. And whereas in addition, John W. Gardner received an honorable discharge in 1945 and numerous valor awards throughout his career, Mr. Gardner also served along with Edward Giblin as the grand marshal of Montclair's 2012 Fourth of July Parade. And whereas John W. Gardner was a loving husband, father, grandfather, and great-grandfather, and took great joy in the time he spent with his family, he was a good neighbor, friend to many, and always a consummate gentleman. Now therefore, be it resolved that the council of the township of Montclair expresses the thanks of a grateful community for the life and contributions of John W. Gardner and extends its sympathy to his family and friends. And it's signed by the council and tested to by a clerk, Lynda Schwan, on June 26, 2018. Thank you and congratulations. And let me just say, and I know I'm speaking for the council, that when I think of Chief Gardner, I do think of the consummate gentleman. Really a professional, and I think very, I know chief would say, very tough shoes to fill. A great professional, a great gentleman, and certainly will miss his melodic voice, as he was always wont to do. And just great to be around, and a wonderful man, and we're so thankful for his life and the contributions he made to this community, and for your family for loaning him to us for so long. Thank you very much. You're welcome.
Mayor, if I might, if I could, the family could just wait. My wife Christine said to me that Lois Bauer in your family is her cousin who married John's niece. So we'd seen him at many, many family gatherings at the Secora family, my wife's native names, but it's Lois Bauer, just give our sympathy to her again, but that's a connection to my wife Christine Russo. Thank you, our sympathy.
Do you have any remarks you want to say? We've got a quiet group here. I just want to say too, for our fire department, I know you guys, you know, standing in the shoes of a great man like John, it's really, it's really special that you took the time out to come today, and with all your respect, it's really important, thank you.
I'd just like to say, I got to know the chief only in retirement, but I saw him at many events, and as the mayor said, he was always willing to fall into a song. It didn't take a lot of prodding. And I'd like, his birthday's 2/21/21, I always called him on his birthday. I'm, I'm, I'm going to miss that, but, and it's so nice talking to all of you at, at the wake, and he was just a lot of fun.
Um, at this time, I'd like to call up Rafael Marzullo, who would like to make a presentation regarding our sister city, Acquilonia, Italy.
Good evening. I had the pleasure again, this June, to go back to Acquilonia for two things. One, for the election for the new mayor, which is held administration also every five years. And be happy to report that Giancarlo has again been voted as the mayor of Acquilonia, Giancarlo De Vito, and his administration. When I was there, I, I brought the hellos and congratulations from the township council and from the mayor, and from our other friends. It was an experience to take part, and a small town with about 1,200 people, they had four lists of people voting. They, they won by like 46 votes, but it was just amazing to watch here. We go to the poll, it's private, we put the, we vote in, and that's it. Hey, you go to everybody's house and make them promise you to vote. And you actually have families where the father is working, is voting for one party and the, and the son is working for another. But that being said, it was a great experience. One, before I get into anything else, one thing that we did, as you can remember, we went to the shrine of Saint Michael the Archangel. And every question was, how is she doing? And doing fine. But one thing that we didn't have then, that we didn't think of bringing back, but Mimo Fucci, who was the care, caregiver of the Grotto of Saint Michael, he had wanted, he had saw that we had pictures of our little section, and he sent a book for the, for the cabinet of Saint Michael's. This is a, a rock from the Grotta of Saint Michael, which is meaning, and, last but not least, I didn't want to bring it too big because we didn't have the room, but a statue of Saint Michael to put in there. So there we have it. So this I will entrust to you.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you. Thank you very, very much, Rafael. Thank you.
My pleasure. And everybody kept asking, where's the mayor? How come they didn't come back?
Well, I think we did, we did come together again and, and talk about a lot of things that we want to do as sister cities. And our sister cities is unique because we have this huge town of Montclair with 40,000-plus residents. And Acquilonia, when nobody's there is about 1,200, and it's forced to about 3,000 when everybody comes home. It's, it's a unique mixture, but we came together so nicely. And one thing that we did when we were there was we, we marched in the, in the Feast of San Vida in Acquilonia. And again, the Vasquale Cassio, who's the regional bishop of Sant'Angelo di Lombardi, said the Mass again, as he did last year. And he talked about the symbolism that we have with that, is that at that time, we all come together as one community. Doesn't matter who you are, you're the mayor, you could be the, anyone, a world equal. And that we march around the city, respecting everyone, coming together as a community, and helping everyone. There's a lot of projects that have been started by Giancarlo in Acquilonia, which is trying to keep the people from going out of Acquilonia to go find work. It's important. The bishop sent to me, so Rafaelle, how's the fight going for Our Lady of Monte Carmo Church? So let me explain something to you, he said. Our Lady of Monte Carmo Church, you as Italians, and everybody else, but you as Italians need to fight for Monte Carmo, because Monte Carmo is an Italian church. When people left Italy, as he explained it, went to Naples to come to the United States, they'll be in Naples, and there's a huge church there of Our Lady of Monte Carmo. And a lot of people prayed and swore that if they made it to America and were okay, that they would worship Our Lady of Monte Carmo. So he goes, it's a fight we need to keep. We were supposedly closed in September of 2013, we are still there. We're just starting work on a roof for 20, I wouldn't think the archdiocese would want to spend that kind of money if we were going to be closed. So they're fixing the roof. But most importantly, what we're having is the Feast of Our Lady of Monte Carmo, which will run from July 19th through the 22nd. One thing that makes this special is that this year, we are dedicating the Mass, the Feast, and most importantly, at the end of the Mass, the hall downstairs to Monsignor Emmanuel Capizelli, who is a strong community fighter for low-income housing, for the poor, which is what we do with our community outreach program. So we'd like to invite the entire council to come on the 22nd, march with us. We've asked the fire department to be present and put up something, you know, to show to the community what we do, and we'll extend the same invitation to the police department, but it's the same thing. We come together as a community, and what we do together, whether we're a small town or a big town, is we, we help the elderly, we help the needy, we take care of those who find themselves in a time of need, which is very, very important. The other connection we made while I was there, not to go back, is that we, we set up meetings, for example, they want to have a, a cooking school in Italy for chefs who want to come over and learn. We want to do student exchanges. We've spoken to the Italian government insofar as arranging funds to send students from, not only Acquilonia, but the whole Alte Pinia, which are, we have here in Montclair, people from Acquilonia, Cali, La Giedonia, the whole region, and encompass that and get them to come, and bring a few students over there in exchange for a few students to come over That being said, I thank you for your time, and please, please come to the feast and join us.
Thank you very much.
Deputy Mayor for Kent.
Yes.
Layla, just don't leave until I give you this, because I think you should all know that Mr. Marzullo, who's been a member for 12 years or 10 years of Montclair Unico, when we reformed this group about 2008, I found the old program with your name on, and I want to give this to you as the Unico National District Four, Montclair Chapter of Unico. Now, last night, at Saint Cassian's Church, we all elected Rafael Marzullo to be the first vice president of the Montclair Unico. So it's going to be a revived group. We all paid our dues, had a big meeting, and we elected Rafael vice president. So congratulations to you on being head of the Unico group, and here's your program from many years ago with your name listed. Got something to give you today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Rafael.
And thank you for the lovely gifts. They will be prominently displayed in our cabinet. Thank you. Um, Ms. Wanett, do you want to do the, um, the new business ordinances?
I, would you like to public comment first? We'll go back to that, that's fine. Okay. Um, we'll, we'll move over to public comment if there's anybody that would like to address the council. They could do so now. State your name, please.
Frederick Schajester, 56 Gordon Hurst Avenue. And what I'd like to speak about today is traffic safety. In the 19th century, the head of the patent office proposed closing the patent office because all worthwhile inventions had already been made. It seems to me that we should have an active traffic and parking committee during the summers because accidents don't take time off during the summer. And this is reinforced when we were leaving our street earlier this evening, and someone was crossing, pedestrians were crossing, and they had pressed the button for the flashing lights. A driver came through without slowing down at all and almost hit them. And if he had, I would have been a witness at his trial. What I did do was sit on the horn. Now, I see all too many instances of this kind of thing going on in Montclair, and I think we need better enforcement. Maybe we even need to change the law. If you consult NJSA on this, a driver is only required when those lights are flashing to slow down, not necessarily to stop. The problem with this is if a driver doesn't happen to see somebody about to cross, it could be tragic. If we had a regulation that they were required to do really, really serious about protecting the pedestrians, that would make things safer for all of us. So I'd like to propose that the Traffic and Parking Committee be active year-round, because accidents don't take the holiday off.
I am Pat Kenshaft at 56 Gordon Hurst Avenue, and I have three very short statements. I strongly support what Fred said. I think that's important. I also strongly support the statement of, of the plea tonight for senior citizens to make the senior citizen center in Edgemont Park accessible to people again. The changes there have been quite drastic and very much undermining public participation there. And thirdly, I'm not sure that you can do anything about the traffic on Grove Street, Grove and Watchung, but they just repaved it, and then they painted, and they have very short left-turn lanes, not enough only for three very short vehicles. And if there's a fourth vehicle, they stay in the mainland, and the traffic on Grove Street just stops until they can turn, the fourth car can turn left onto Watchung. That car backs all, everything behind them, people that want to go through, and I have witnessed the traffic there backed up two, three blocks, just sitting there waiting to go through Watchung Avenue because there's not enough left, wide enough left-turn lane for people waiting to turn left. So I, and there's space there for that. I'd like to make a plea that if you can do anything about the traffic, the corner of Grove and Watchung, it's really quite frightening now.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Kathleen Bennett, Ten Glenwood Road, Chairperson of the HPC. And tonight I'm here to share with you some of the work that the HPC has done, especially last month. We held our Historic Preservation Awards, three categories. The first one was the Bricks and Mortar Award, and there were two awardees in that category. One is a vernacular, single-story, single-family house on Clermont Avenue. A gentleman bought it, fixed it up, rehabbed it, and it looks beautiful now. Really a, a great showpiece on Clermont Avenue. The other one is the George, which has been going on for a couple of years. That, as we all know, was a grand-style house built by one of the prominent architects in Montclair, and that has turned out really magnificently. So just to show you the range of buildings that we have in the township, from the vernacular, really humble homes, houses, to these grand houses that had servants and gardens and carriages and, and et cetera. The other category is the Preservation Service Award. And the first one went to the library, the Montclair History Center, and also the HPC. We instituted a, a session, a workshop, where we invite people to come to the library to look at the resources which are available within the township so that people can look up their houses, the history of their houses, from the deed search to the tax maps, to the directories that are held at the Montclair History Center. And also, we have some things, some records that are here in the planning department. So it's a collaborative effort, and I think it was, it's a, it shows you how people are really interested in the history of their homes, not only their homes, but other buildings as well. We've had standing room only, and we're going to continue. We've had 14 sessions already, we will continue it again for next year. The other Preservation Award, Preservationist Award, was another collaborative effort between the Rotary Club, the Montclair Library, and Mr. Frank Koleski, who's here tonight. And that was an award given to the three participants, the three collaborators, to celebrate the Don Miller Freedom mural. Don Miller painted the mock-up for the Freedom mural at his studio on Bloomfield Avenue. Frank, Mr. Koleski, knew that it was there, and working with the Rotary Club, they presented it to the library where it's now on display. And so it's another very important aspect of Montclair's social history. Doesn't have to be a building, it's, it's the culture and the social history of Montclair. And then the final award went, with Preservationist of the Year, went to Jane Eliasov, who is the Executive Director of the Montclair History Center. And I think we can all agree that since she's taken over the reins, it has really been revamped, revised. They do tons of programming there now with their two, three houses, and from the herb sales to the, the house tours, walking tours, and all the wards of the town, there's really been a lot of activity there. So I just wanted the council and Mr. Mayor to know what, what's going on, and to just to point out, and to really, you know, understand that this is something that's very important to the township, in all aspects, all wards, everybody. So thank, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that would like to address the council at this time?
My name is Belinda Plutz, I live at 419 Valley Road, and I'm a senior. And while what has happened at Edgemont Park, much of it is beautiful, the parking situation is horrific. And not just for seniors, but for families with small children, there just simply isn't enough parking. And where parking should be is a big lawn that is just sucking water because they were out there watering it. We need more parking, we need more access, we need to be able to bring lots of people in there because the programs are wonderful, and people's commitment is absolutely there, but it's not accessible. We need help. So I hope this gets fixed sometime soon. Thank you.
Good evening. My name's Laura Ball, I'm a recent resident of Montclair. So pardon me if I'm unfamiliar with the discussions that are currently ongoing on this topic.
Could you move the microphone down a tiny bit?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
I invite you to take a moment to imagine the situation. It shouldn't be too hard, as many of our ancestors underwent similar circumstances. For a while now, it's been getting worse. United States grown food has become cheaper to buy than food grown in your country, and the best of the produce you grow, you grow, all gets exported abroad, and you do not even receive a living wage for it. Whatever you do, it is rounded up by gangs. Violence has begun to swallow your city, and the sons, your sons are given the choice to either join gangs or be killed. Several of your family members have already succumbed to that fate, or in civil wars that are currently ongoing. After losing several family members and undergoing extreme poverty for so long, it becomes a choice between leaving and finding a safe ground or certain death. If you go south, you'll be caught in the middle of civil wars in other countries, so you risk an extremely perilous journey north to a country that is famous for the American Dream. You were told that there is a president there now who hates Latin Americans and Muslims, but still staying would mean death, so you choose to go north. On the journey, you come face-to-face with death constantly, whether in the unforgiving desert or in inner tube rafts in the sea. You were abused by immigrants, smuggled coyotes, and had to pay every last penny you had to them. Then you arrive at the US border and ask for asylum for fear of death in your home country, and you're put in cage and told that you will never see your children again. Hopefully, we're all outraged by what is happening right now with thousands of immigrant children having been detained and separated from their families. Even worse, the only solution the White House has come up with is to change the Flores Agreement in order to be able to detain the children indefinitely, but with their parents, and the families now arriving after his executive order are being detained in cages together. But thousands of children, including infants and toddlers, are in cages without their parents, and it's unknown how long it would take to reunite them. Who knows where they are, what is being done with them, but they could be anywhere, and they may never see their parents again. This is horrifyingly reminiscent of the Japanese internment camps of World War II and their intense human rights violations. The reason why these immigrants are not called refugees is political, but that is what they are. The Refugee Act of 1980 adopted the UN definition of a refugee as any person who legitimately fears persecution in their home country. Now they arrive here and have their children ripped out of their arms and no idea where they are being sent to. Many sources say the kids have been sexually and physically abused and are being put on mood-altering drugs. And immigrants who have put their sweat and blood into this country for 20, 30 years are being sent away back to the war zones in their countries. The city and country were built on and rely on the labor of immigrants from around the And we enjoy many aspects of cultures from around the world, music, food, you name it. We are proud of that. Immigrants from countries in so-called Latin America make, make up a huge part of this country, and Montclair would not be the same without them. They deserve to be treated with kindness when they arrive at our border after fleeing the violence in their countries, and to have their rights respected when they're here. They work extremely hard and ask for little. Not to mention the fact that most of these so-called immigrants have indigenous roots, and indigenous people of the Americas always moved around, there were no borders, and they were here first. The US is the only country in the UN not to sign the Convention on the Rights of the Child. Does that accurately represent our idea of what the United States represents to us? A land that claims to be one of equality and opportunity that does not discriminate on race, religion, or nationality? The Fourth Amendment prohibits unreasonable searches and seizures and requires any such warrant to be judicially sanctioned and supported by probable cause. Title VI of the Civil Rights Act prohibits discrimination on the basis of race, color, and national origin in programs and activities receiving federal funding, and ICE is violating these and many other laws. I was surprised to find that the township of Montclair has not yet become a sanctuary city, given its progressive reputation. On the local level, we have to pass laws and ensure that local law enforcement do not cooperate with federal immigration agents because... cooperate with federal immigration agents because they're disregarding human rights and the law. Crossing the border illegally is a misdemeanor, and the manner in which ICE is detaining these people is a violation of their Fourth Amendment rights, not to mention that they are also detaining people and stealing the children of those who legally arrive at the border to request asylum. Several New Jersey cities have already become sanctuary cities and showed to defend human rights, meaning that they do not cooperate with ICE, such as East Orange, Newark, and Maplewood. Montclair is seen as a progressive leader in New Jersey, and it would be a shame for that identity to be proven false for the fear of losing federal funding. It is time to take a stand to protect the children immigrants without whom this country would not run. They deserve the same kind of treatment and opportunity as all the descendants of European immigrants. It wasn't too long ago that Irish and Italian-Americans and poor immigrants from other European countries were discriminated against and persecuted too. But now here we are. Just being a, quote, "welcoming" city is not enough. Let's be on the right side of history. The federal government may threaten removing funding, but those who do the right thing will be rewarded. We will find a way to compensate for that loss, and we are not alone. It's time to take a meaningful stand and stop ICE from their campaign of ethnic cleansing, at least in this city and then hopefully at the county and state levels. We too have become, we have come too far as a country to allow all that progress to be reversed in two years of a new administration. The Constitution ensures states and cities the rights exactly for this reason when, like now, the federal government abuses their power. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause]
Dr. Virginia Cornu, 143 Claremont Avenue, Apartment 1. Again, a comment on Edgemont Park. The, the point that I made at a previous council meeting, that the perceived conflict between aesthetics and accessibility is a false equivalence. You can certainly have beauty and function at the same time, and I'm urging the council to rectify not only the parking situation. I tried to park there yesterday on the circle, on the outgoing circle. There was a car in front of me. I went back and forth. I'm a very good parallel parker, and I went back and forth three or four times, and I ended up being on a straight line to the curb because my car does not bend in the middle, and I was about a foot and a half to two feet out from the curb. And that was also out into the roadway itself, making the roadway more narrow. I think there are other accessibility issues. So I noticed the other day a woman who came in a van parked in front of me. I was on the incoming circle and the first in line, so it was easier to get to the curb. And she got out of her car. She had a cane. She tried two or three times to get into that little notch and ended up with the rear end of her van sticking out nearly four feet into the roadway. Also, on that supposed accessibility ramp, there is no ramp there. The Belgian blocks stick up about maybe three inches above the roadway. So for anybody who is coming in with a wheelchair or using a cane or just is not, you know, the most stable on their feet or is pushing a baby or a toddler in a stroller, that's a trip hazard, a very, very keen trip hazard. I think there may be other handicapped issues, accessibility issues, and I'm wondering, was the building or were the building plans vetted for handicapped accessibility with an expert on handicap accessibility and senior accessibility before the plans were even approved? So, Virginia, please do something about it. Do not make a false equivalence between beauty and accessibility. They are not contradictory at all. Thank you. Bye-bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
[applause] Anybody else that would like to come up at this time? I see no one, and we will move on with our agenda. I'd like to call upon Councilman McMahon to read the new business order.
First is A. This is an ordinance to amend the Township Amendment Chapter 322 of the Code of the Township of Montclair, also known as the Toing Ordinance, and I so move.
Second.
Should we do a voice roll call to these?
I believe we can do a regular vote.
Oh, okay.
Voice vote.
Okay. All in favor?
Wait, just a question. We got something from the police chief about this.
We did.
Did we incorporate that request he made? Or, you know what I'm talking about?
Is this clear?
Yeah. Was that incorporated?
The memo is just a memorandum to accompany the ordinance to...
It supports what we're doing. It supports what we're doing tonight. Thank you. Sorry.
And excuse me, Deputy Mayor, I just referenced it again, and it does include fees so that it's appropriate to do a roll call.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. And so you'll do the roll call?
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Baskerville.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schlegel.
Yes.
Counselor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes.
Counselman McMahon, would you do Item B?
My pleasure.
Thank you.
This is B. This is an ordinance to amend Montclair Code, Chapter 309, taxation regarding refunds in connection with the cancellation of property taxes for veterans deemed to be totally disabled, and I so move.
Second.
Any discussion?
Counselor Baskerville.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schlegel.
Yes.
Counselor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, our, let's see, our consent agenda, we have Resolutions Number 1 through 18 on our agenda here, and I'd like to move all of those.
Second.
Any discussion?
Madam Mayor, can I just pull Number 17 only? I have a quick question for Mr. Stafford.
Yep, okay. So then we will do 1 through 16 and 18.
Thank you.
Any discussion or any questions? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Oh, voice, voice.
Yeah, you gotta do, you gotta do a roll call.
So this is 1 through 16 and 18.
That's right.
Mm-hmm. Counselor Baskerville.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schlegel.
Yes.
Counselor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes.
Counselman Spiller, do you have a question on Number 17?
Yes, and I'll so move it for discussion purposes.
Second.
Thank you. Mr. Stafford, I was just, you know, reviewing it again, and I read the accompanying memo to this one, and the questions I had were, how many firms did we receive responses from that Mr. Wood notes in his memo?
I could give you an accurate tally. My recollection is it was more than five.
Okay. Do you remember the, he notes in here that they narrowed it down to three. Do you know who the three were?
Although I was in on the process, I don't recall the other names, the other two firms' names.
Can you get that for me?
Of course.
In the future?
Sure.
And have we done, have they done actually a lot of work for us so far?
They've done some work for this township in connection with various construction projects, yes.
Okay.
Yeah, in fact, since I've been here.
Okay. That's my question. Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep, by all means.
Okay, I would also like to ask in regard to this, besides construction projects, if there are engineering, like what Mr. Chichester just talked about, would this firm be able to do that as well, to look at traffic patterns?
Without question.
Okay.
Sure. Absolutely. Full-service firm.
Okay, great. Okay, was it second?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
That's a, that's a voice. That's a roll call.
Oh, roll call. I'll never get it right. Okay.
Counselor Baskerville.
Yes.
Thank you. Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schlegel.
Yes.
Counselor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes.
I'd like to call upon Counselman Hurlock to read Number 19.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor Schlegel. I would like to move the resolution designating Deputy Mayor of the Township of Montclair, Sean Spiller, effective January, uh, January. Pardon me, Sean. July 1st, 2018, and I so move.
Second.
And with thanks to Deputy Mayor Schlegel for your service over the last year.
Thank you very much. It's been a pleasure. Yes.
And I can be a voice for him.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, congratulations.
Thank you. Madam Deputy Mayor, if I'll have a moment?
Yes.
Privilege. Thank you very much. I first want to start by saying thank you for your service in the capacity over the last year. I think you've done a tremendous job. I also want to thank my colleague for moving this. Thank you. Thank you, Bill. I appreciate that, and of course, thank all my colleagues. I am extremely proud for, to be honored with this title. I am humbled by it, and I also am committed to what we've been successful doing over the last number of years. That's really doing what we can for the residents, whether it be paving streets, making things run more efficiently, putting dollars into parks. I think this is a great conversation we're having today because we're talking about improvements and how we make things better, but it's around us making improvements and how we can even make that more accessible to people's points while being aesthetically pleasing. So I am proud of the work that all of us are doing. I thank my colleagues for reducing debt to allow us to do these without the major increases that other towns are seeing in terms of taxes. I think that's something to be commended, and certainly as a homeowner and taxpayer myself, I'm very happy with that. But I also want to thank the residents because of so many people with so many skill sets, but also commitment to being involved that really makes Montclair so special. So again, thank you to all of you. I appreciate this honor, and I certainly will do everything I can to live up to what you bestowed upon me. Thank you.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to Resolution Number 20. Mayor Jackson, would you like to read that?
Yes, I would. Thank you. Whereas the Board, this is approving the Board of School Estimate budget.
Yes.
Whereas the Board of School estimate of the Township of Montclair has fixed and determined the number of $115,941,279 as the amount necessary to be appropriated for the use of the public schools of the Township of Montclair for the ensuing year, and whereas the Board of School estimate has delivered to the Council of the Township of Montclair a certificate of such amount duly executed by at least three members of said board, and whereas the amount so certified is in excess of 1 and 1/2 percent of the valuation of the assessed ratables of the Township of Montclair as determined by the Essex County Board of Taxation, now therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Township of Montclair in the County of Essex that in accordance with NJSA 18A:22-17, the Council thus hereby concur in and consent to the appropriation of the amount so certified by the Board of School Estimate, I so move.
Second. All in, do we need a roll call because it's money?
Yeah.
A lot of money. Okay.
Counselor Baskerville.
Yes.
Counselor Hurlock.
Yes.
Counselor McMahon.
Yes.
Counselor Russo.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Schlegel.
Yes.
Counselor Spiller.
Yes.
Mayor Jackson.
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, and continuing along, Counselman McMahon, would you like to do Number 21, please?
Before we do that, I would just like to report, I did leave a memo to you all this evening, but I would like to say that we received all the proper monies that are necessary for renewal. Also, inspections have been conducted by the Police Department, Fire Department, Building Department, and Health Department, and all of these licenses noted on these resolutions are in compliance. I referenced in the memo that there are three currently that are not in compliance because they have failed to receive their tax clearance certificate. If they do not receive it by the end of this term, which is June 30th, they will have to apply for something called an ad interim permit, which is issued by the state, which allows them to operate for a finite period of time until they submit their tax clearance.
Thank you. Okay.
Okay, this is Number 21.
Mm-hmm.
This is a resolution authorizing renewal of alcoholic beverage consumption licenses for the places, so mainly, just consumption licenses are the places where you go to.
To, okay. Okay. All in favor? Oh, did you move? Oh, sorry.
I did, and second, I so move.
I'll second. I'd just like to ask a question.
Yep.
I just want to ask a serious question because I saw a TV report Assemblyman Bozzacelli is putting a bill in that would increase the license, licenses. There's 16,000 in Pennsylvania, 51,000 in New York, and New Jersey has about 8,000. And because we have that restriction of needing to have a certain population, right?
Right.
There's a bill in that would make it easier for some licenses. I just wanted to know if that's something that we should be aware of? Is there going to be any, is there any progress on that bill? Is that going to affect us? Is it going to make it double the licenses? Are these licenses cost so much now because of so few?
Right. I know that it was addressed in several committees, but no action has been taken, and actually the Clerks Association is looking into it. There's mixed reviews on that, however. Mayor, excuse me, I thought at one time you brought that up. Did you have any news update on that?
Uh, no. It is just, you know, I sort of re-earthers it periodically, and it's doing so again. That's all I can.
Right. So that's our status at the time, but I'll...
So it's just a proposal at this point? Nothing? Thank you.
Okay. Your question?
I just, yeah, I have a question. I'm trying to understand. Down here it says for both 21 and 22 that they terminate June 30th, 2018. Is that supposed to be 2019, or these do terminate on the 30th of this June?
Is that a...
These are terminating, this is for the following.
2019.
Right. So it's supposed to be 2019, or is it supposed to be...
Type them?
I don't understand.
It says issue, we're issuing.
Issuing it.
Counselor Baskerville, it says issuing these licenses that will terminate, right? Or does that mean that they're terminating now?
It's to issue licenses to these establishments whose permits or licenses are terminating June 30th, 2019.
Okay.
And when we issue it, it'll terminate in 2019. All liquor licenses in every town in New Jersey expire June 30th.
Got it.
So that's why we have an annual renewal if they meet. No, I just couldn't figure out the date because today is like the 26th, and I'm like...
Everyone will shut down in four days.
So for the next year, we renew.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Councilman Russo, would you like to do number 22?
22, is that the same thing? It's a renewal of the licenses?
It is.
So, a resolution 22 authorizes renewal of alcoholic beverage distribution licenses that are listed here, set forth. I so move.
I get set.
Any questions regarding that? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
I abstain.
Okay. Number 23, Councilman Spiller.
Sure, thank you very much.
Mm-hmm.
Number 23 is also related. Resolution authorizing a place-to-place transfer, which is the expansion of premises of an alcoholic beverage consumption license, and I so move.
Second.
And I'd like to ask a question.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor, thank you.
Sure.
So, in looking at this one and maybe, I guess, Madam Clerk, you would be the one that would answer this question, or maybe it would be Mr. Stafford. So, looking at the document that you gave us today, correct? This is an expansion, meaning the space that we've seen here, this new deck, is that the area we're talking about here?
If you look at, if you're coming into the parking lot.
Yes.
As you know, there's already an established area to the left. This just continues, not as wide area, but to the right.
And does it remove or reduce any parking spaces?
I am not certain. I'll check, but I don't believe it has.
Yeah?
It does not.
It does not? Okay.
It was, it was a handicap rep against the back of the building, which is, there wasn't tables there, there was no parking.
Right. But it doesn't, because if you're looking at this thing, it doesn't extend it because they have a new parking, a new handicap ramp and a new extension, so you're saying...
The handicap ramp is new. That's where there were outside tables that were on the ground level where.
Okay, so again, none of this would be something that would be, need to be reviewed by other entities to determine parking and see how it affects us. Okay.
I did go to look at it, to see it, and it did extend to the parking area. The part, the ramp, the handicap ramp is placed horizontally, so it really doesn't intrude into the parking area, at least by my non-professional assessment of where it was located.
Okay.
And it is narrower, it's not as wide as the one on the left side.
Okay.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Very good. Okay, I'd like to take the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, very good. Councilwoman Baskerville, would you like, I would like for you to do number 24.
Thank you very much, Deputy Mayor. I'd like to do 24 and 25, and I'd like to offer my apologies to Ms. Aleah Agostini-Livingstone because I requested that we be able to move this so that you wouldn't have to sit through here, thank goodness. This was a very short meeting and I'm glad that you were able to stay. These are resolutions for appointments to the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee, be it resolved by the Council of the Township of Montclair and the County of Essex, that Aleah Agostini-Livingstone be, and she hereby is appointed to serve as a member of the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee effectively immediately and terminating December 31st, 2021, and I so move.
I second.
And I also would like to offer Greg Passon, be it resolved, that he also be appointed to the Park and Recreation Advisory Committee effective immediately and terminating December 31st, 2021, and I so move.
Second.
Very good. Any questions, any comments?
I have a comment. I'd just like to say that both of them have been attending the advisory committee meetings. They are very active participants. Ms. Livingstone was moved because there was a need around the Porter Park area that she saw to try to do some upgrades and just get some participation from near residents and others in terms of basically, you know, beautifying and some maintenance things. And so, I applaud you for stepping up as so many people do in the Township of Montclair when we see a need. So, thank you so much and I look forward to your participation.
Okay.
And I just wanted to comment, we added Greg Passon, Greg's been one who organized the Make Music Montclair, so he's been very active in that area that, in dealing with parks, he's been volunteering, so I'm glad to see us add him as well as Aleah. Thank you.
Great. Congratulations. Okay. Yes, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now you can, congratulations. That's great, thank you. Okay, next on our agenda is discussion regarding Edgemont Park parking lot. I, so I guess we, the committee that was formed would like to address this?
Yes, Bob and Renee and I met at the park and along with the Von Hoffmans and went over it. Actually, we had, we had community services, not while we're there, but subsequently mark out the area that, that this plan that Kim Craft drew up to cover, and we all agreed that we should move forward with it. So, we're presenting it to the council. Yeah, I'd just like to add a comment because I was one of the most vocal people saying, "Don't do anything, leave the park the way it is." But after taking a close look, spending time with Councilor Baskerville and Councilor McMahon, talking to a lot of people, I think, and I want to preserve the park, believe me, it's a beautiful park, great work that has been done, except there is a parking deficit, I believe, and there's a parking difficulty, I believe, especially seniors like myself. So, I do believe that this plan that has an additional six spots that would not intrude too much on the park, it would be a cut into the area that's now been planted, it would give additional handicap spots and spots that seniors and other people, every average person might have difficulty parking around the area. So, I've been convinced that this would be a compromise solution. I know a lot of people would like to see 20 parking spots, some people don't want to see any, but I've been convinced after looking at it several times and spending a lot of time photographing and taking a careful look at this location, that this plan that has a additional six spots would be a good compromise. And I think we're looking at compromises in life today a lot. You know, the governor I just heard before we left to come here was offering a compromise to the legislature. He gives half of what they want and they give half of what they want and you come to a solution. I remember many times Mayor Freed previously used to say, "We need to learn how to combine." I think Ann Lippel was here recently saying, "We get the good with the good." And Virginia, what was your just phrase? You know, you can't, it doesn't, one beauty doesn't eliminate practicality or... So, I'm looking at this as a compromise that helps solve a problem that was inadvertently maybe created, though I do think we have to look at this as a park and not look at this as the place that seniors are going to make the senior center for Montclair. So, I want to look ahead. I'd like to see this done, this change made to accommodate parking concerns, but I do want to have everybody look ahead to having a senior center because it should be somewhere else than Edgemont Park that is the main gathering place for senior activities in Montclair. Thank you.
I'd just like to say that originally I was one of the people that was very, very convinced that based on what I was hearing, that we needed to add additional spaces and do some things with it. And certainly at this point in time, I'm here and I want to hear from the entire council. And even when we were there, I was letting my colleagues know that while the design with the additional spaces, I certainly don't feel is going to be anything that's going to take away from the aesthetics. I do, you know, I like to err on listening to the representative of that area. And I also was surprised to find out that there are actually about six or was it seven? I don't recall now, but there are several spaces that are there that are, that are not on a curb, so that it would allow people that can't park on the curb access. And my main concern was to provide adequate parking for people with disabilities, people that are handicapped. And I'm convinced that we could also do that with what's there. If we decided to take four of those spaces, for example, and have them for handicapped accessibility, the area that originally was supposed to be parking for the van in front of the ramp, then the ramp definitely needs to have further renovations to make it a safe ramp. When we visualize it, it's going to be more of a drop-off area so that jitney services, senior buses, and others, even if someone's dropping someone off, would be able to be dropped off there and then, then parking. I was also noting that, and I'm not sure if this is true, but I was told during the tour that there are more parking spaces there now with the current design than there were before, before this design. And so, it didn't seem like there was a shortage of parking spaces, so I'm, you know, I'm keeping an open mind. I want to hear more. There's tons of parking on Valley Road and the side streets and around. And I also like to encourage when we do activities there, this would be a great opportunity for us to look in the direction of the environment and perhaps see what we can do as a group to have increased jitney services. I don't know, you know, the jitney that does whatever they do during the daytime or from the bus or senior busing or what have you. But I think that the, the design that we're presenting tonight is not unattractive and it does give, you know, more parking options, but I'd like to hear from you Deputy Mayor. And I know that you're in a close relationship with the neighbors that will probably be most often impacted, and so I'd like to hear from you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. I, yes, I have spoken to many of the neighbors, both on the telephone, and I've gotten many emails from them as well. And I would have to say that they are all, all of them that I spoke to are in favor of the current configuration that is there now with this, with the, with this circle in front of the, in front of the house. I do have a question, though, with this new drawing that was planned here. These new parking spaces, these diagonal spots, when they're pulling in and especially when they're pulling out, if there are cars parked along the circle, what is the spacing between that? It's, looks to me as wide as this is, and it's pretty wide. I have driven through it a couple of times the last few days. I've parked. How does that work? It's plenty of space. It's enough space?
Took in that into account.
Without backing up into a spot?
Even with the trucks, and that was, that was one of our concerns too, Deputy Mayor. We had the question and wanted to know, for example, they had the landscaping truck there. So, even with a truck that was in that location, there's plenty of space to go in and out.
To back out.
Okay.
And the angle actually helps.
Okay.
Diagonally, that, you're already, you're already partially turned as you come in.
Okay. The other question I would have is, there is a sprinkler system that's been installed, and I've seen it, it's working beautifully. I saw it several times this week and the grass looks terrific. If these spots were carved out, how would that, my question would be how it would bump into the new sprinkler system?
That's an unknown that I'd have to ask the contractor. I would imagine it's possible that there would be negative impact that we'd have to address, but I don't know that sitting here.
Sure, of course I don't know, right? But it's something that, it's...
Mainly, there might be no impact. I just don't know.
Right, right. And I agree with you, Councilwoman Baskerville, the parking spaces that were previously in the lot, many of them were self-made. Many of them were years and years and years of people parking on the grass and the park deteriorated because of that. And not only that, it made divots and puddles whenever it rained and it was muddy and messy. So, technically, there were not a ton, there's, it's probably almost the same amount of parking that was there, regular legal parking. I, I personally, you know, I represent the people of the second ward, the park is in this ward. I represent all of the people that live in the second ward, not, not all of them. And I especially am sensitive to the people who live in and around the park, people who live day-to-day with the park. And, and everybody, everybody's very happy with this circle. And it's, it's beautiful and I know that functionality and beauty don't always perhaps are the same category, but I think it's just beautiful. I, but I will wait to hear for the, for the questions that I asked from the engineer and the town manager, wait for answers for those. But I think that the park deserves this beautiful circle and so does the house and so does, and so does our whole town. So, at this time, that's how I feel.
Well, to your point, I'll reach out to the contractor and I'll shoot an email to the government body.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else want to...
And Mr. Stafford, just so I understand it, as I look at these things too, in your memo that you have here, you've got two different pricing, and that is one with a retaining wall and one with, can you explain that?
Well, this memo was too many, it was by Miss Craft. But as I understand it, it was, it was a two-pronged suggestion, the first prong, which was more expensive about the wall, structure of the wall, the second prong did not, the second suggestion did not, the second suggestion offered a curve and hedge rather than the wall.
And where would that be? Where am I looking at in terms of that wall?
Well, I believe that would be...
Is that under there, right there?
Right in front of that.
There would need to be a hedge or a wall.
Front of the spaces there?
And the theoretical would be to screen headlights. So, the question, I suppose, for the government would be what best would achieve that? You read her, Ms. Craft's memo, it says this would provide additional screening of headlights.
Okay, thank you.
So, it saves about $15,000 to just do hedging or screening that's plantings, right? Rather than a wall. I do not like seeing walls anywhere. I don't like seeing it built any walls. So, I would suggest going with the very, very limited cost of $20,000 for just hedging. But I want to hear the rest of the council's feeling because I have changed my position from originally not wanting to do this because I've looked at the whole situation from a townwide view, and that's my concern now, seniors, handicapped, accessibility. But I want to always look ahead, that we should not be making this the senior center location. But at this time, I think if we could make an adjustment that adds some parking without damaging the appearance too much, it's of minimal impact from where I could see. That's just my opinion, it would be a good compromise solution.
Councilman Spiller, did you want to add something?
Yeah, well, I appreciate it. I mean, as, as you guys are reporting out on this tonight for the first time, this is the first I'm seeing the sketch. So, first thing I'd want to do is, you know, head over there and kind of visualize what you've drawn out here. So, again, I think to the, to my council colleague Russo's comments, you know, we are trying to find balance and oftentimes I do, I fully agree, you know, representing the third ward much as you represent the second ward, we absolutely represent the individuals and residents in our ward, but I'll also offer, we represent all of Montclair. You know, we, we're here to make sure that everyone, that we look out for everyone in our, in our decision-making, and I do think we're trying to find that balance. Is this too far one way or the other? That's something I think we all have to debate and look at, but I'll certainly, you know, be, be heading out there to take a look at what this offers now. Thank you.
And I, again, you know, I'm still keeping an open mind, but the thing that I guess is really trying to, you know, just make me not really sure, when we looked at those spaces there, we looked at adding two additional handicap spaces in the six across there, which would give us a total of four handicap spaces. And I would even think that if we could accomplish that along those, the sides, and again, I think it's either six or seven that are on a straight. So, if we could find a way to accomplish that, that's also another compromise. I mean, I'm just really torn and I think that, you know, whatever we do, we have to try to do the most good for the most people. And, and then I also wonder that if we, if we do this here, and I know some people are concerned about taking, you know, green space and some people may not be, but if we do that in this particular park, does that open up the floodgates for other people to want to do the same in other parks or how, how do we do this? Because I always try to look at things all across the township. The interesting thing about that park is that we do probably more activities there. We do a lot, you know, Memorial Days, we do a lot of things. And that's why I kept trying to say if we could find a way to get more handicap spaces so that during those times when we know we're going to have people that, you know, may not be mobile or just differently abled, we make sure that we have designated spaces for them.
Right.
And the rest of us, we need to walk a little bit more anyway. And so, I'm just, you know, trying to figure it all out.
Well, that's very interesting that you say that, that people do, it's been my experience, and I live right near the park, where it's been my experience that people, when they come to the memorial services or they come to use the playground, they park on Valley Road or Edgemont and they walk closest to the playground or to the, to the statue. Perhaps we need some handicap spots on the street that are right there by the, by the apron that goes, that leads into the park on both of those streets. So, that's something we could look at. It's an easier walk, it's an easier distance, and those curbs are flatter at that time. So, maybe we can look at that.
We just want to look at all the options. Yeah. Parkway and then at the end of Parkway, there's one by the entrance by the...
Oh, there is, okay.
Then on Edgemont, then if you go around the, oh yes, there are two, they're right on Edgemont there.
Two at the complements of Parkway and Edgemont, and then one toward the school by the playground.
Oh, that's perfect. I will, I will drive by, check those out. Thank you.
There's two by Edgemont, you said?
If I may, Mr. Stafford, I think it would behoove us, we had, we had it staked out by engineering when it was still dirt, but now, you know, it's all been sotted. It might be helpful for all to visualize what it would be like if we had it staked out again. Thank you.
Oh, that's a good idea. I would, I would like to see that staked out. Are we good? So, I guess we have some questions that we need answered and we will, and we will get those, I'm sure. Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you all. Okay. Moving on to the bill list, whereas invoices against the Township of Montclair in favor of the following reasons, persons for the amount set opposite their respective names been received duly audited and found correct, therefore be it resolved by the Council of the Township of Montclair, the County of Essex, that said invoices be, and they are hereby ordered paid, and the checks be drawn by the Finance Department to the order such persons for the amounts respectively, here and after stated on computer printout attached hereto and made a part hereof. This bill list is dated June 26th...
June 26, 2018, for a total of $1,583,683.84. And I so move. Is there any discussion on the bill list? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, money, oh, okay.
It's like the Academy Awards and you forget to thank your husband.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. I guess that can, we'll go, oh, I'm so sorry. Yes, we'll go around, ask for council comments. We'll start with Ms. Wannett. Is there anything?
Um, yes. I just wanted to say that last week I had a wonderful opportunity to participate along with Mayor Jackson in a naturalization ceremony that was held at the Montclair Art Museum. There were 29 individuals who were becoming citizens from, no, I'm sorry, there were 17 citizens.
Yeah, 29.
29 and 17 different, yeah, countries. I frankly admitted a lot of ceremonies. This was tremendously moving. I will say, Mayor Jackson, that your remarks just resonated with the group. He, he just hit the right note and they were very appreciative. But I'm happy to say, as the election official for the town, that out of 29, 22 of those individuals chose to register to vote on that date. And the rest of them took home the paperwork. So I think they're going to get a good start to being good citizens.
I can only imagine what, what an experience that was. And I guess I was a little bit disappointed when I read that it had taken place. I don't recall getting a, is it a closed thing where, where council can't go? Or how does that work? Because I really would have just loved to be there to experience it.
Councilwoman Baskerville, I received my initial call from the League of Women Voters because they wanted to register. And then I spoke with Ms. Urbinelli and I attended. But I don't know even, I think it was the Newark Division of the Bureau of Immigration that put the program together. So I really don't know how it all came together, but that's how I was included.
This is the, at least the second year that's been held at the museum. Before, it's been at the Montclair State University. But I believe this is, I don't know how many it's been, but this has been going on every year for a long time. And it's open to the public. And I was asked last year to give remarks and again this year. And it's, as you said...
Excuse me. As you said, Madam Clerk, it's a great honor. Again, 29 new citizens from 16 countries, all of whom are really ecstatic about becoming a part of this great nation. So, no, it's not open, it's not closed. It's, it's open to the public. And it happens every June and toward the end of the month every year. So just keep an eye out for it.
Can I ask, please, that moving forward, as soon as we find out here, if an email goes out, so that, you know, those of us that can attend would be able to, to join, I know that would be helpful for me. And I'm sure, Mayor Jackson, your remarks are always on point and I appreciate them. I've heard them year after year and I always look forward to them. And so I guess I'm feeling as though I missed that, too, because I grow from, from listening to your remarks as well. So I'd just like to be included, if you think of it. Thank you.
And again, I'm sure everybody will repeat this invitation, but I hope everyone, even in the audience, will come out on July 4th for the annual parade, which will honor the 150th anniversary, the sweet centennial. I had to learn how to spell that correctly for the minutes, I'll admit. And the wonderful festival to follow on July 4th.
Do you want to mention Friday? Friday.
Perfect. Oh, well, that's a private ceremony. So I just wanted to ask, I'll, I'll ask the, yes, I just, council members, I know you received an invitation about a Friday evening reception, which is a memorial for Dulatta Belshak's husband Hans. And if you could just give me, if you will be attending before the end of this evening, I'd appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Acting Town Manager Stafford?
Just two things. Our TV 34 is airing last week's commencement exercises of our Montclair High School at various times during various days of the week. So that is available on our, our channels. But there are other recent events as well available on the station's YouTube channel. So I suggest that anyone who's interested in seeing those events, consult our website for more information. Additionally, our health department is offering immunization clinics for various age groups and specific times and dates can be obtained by calling our health department at 973-509-4970. And to the clerk's point, with respect to our Independence Day festivities, it is the 68th Annual Parade. The family picnic will follow in Edgemont Park. And then thereafter, there will be the fireworks display at the Yogi Bear Stadium at Montclair State University.
Great.
Information about all of those programs are available, is available on our website.
Great. Thank you. Attorney Karasik, anything to, you good? Mr. Scannaberry, council comments?
If I might, just jumping on that issue of 4th of July, you know, the celebration this year is for our 150th anniversary. We're like a unique town. I just argued with somebody the other day from Princeton. I know the mayor went to Princeton University. I love Princeton. I said, well, you're the second best town in New Jersey. But it's, it's just a great town to be part of and to be in a position of leadership. And I'm ending my 18th year next week on the council. Seems like a little too long for me. But it's really been an honor to do that and to work with these council members and the mayor that are sitting here with me tonight. I just wanted to say that the project graduation, we've done it many times, but my wife and I enjoyed the other night having this, I guess about 15 buses passed on Valley Road across from Tierney's where we were standing. It was just terrific to see those students cheering and looking to slap a hand as we passed by. And I wanted to appeal to residents, you know, this doesn't get done without cost. Peter Jufre recently sent a letter to all of us. He helps organize this. And I'd encourage people to contribute to Project Graduation. It's sort of a unique thing that we do in Montclair. And it's a great program, but you have to help contribute. So if you can do it before, you know, July, it's a great thing to help out with Project Graduation. Last thing I want to say is, Montclair, you know, I've seen this for so many years I've served, is just not getting treated fairly sometimes by the state. But we do have a governor now who wants to treat us fairly. And I think that by tomorrow, I'm hopeful, from what I'm hearing, that the legislature and the governor will get together on a plan, a compromise that helps fund schools. And if school funding is increased all over this state to what it should be, which we haven't had for eight years, then we can get some resources to Montclair and many other communities, which will help stabilize the taxes. Now, this council has done great work. The mayor's been on, on point with this budget control and with the reduction of debt. I think Governor Murphy's trying to do something similar to what Mayor Jackson and we have done, stabilize the finances of the community, make sure we spend money frugally and wisely. But we've got to have funding sources. Our only source is the property tax. So that's where we're always stuck, you know, increasing property taxes. If the governor can succeed, working with Senator Sweeney and Speaker Coughlin and the legislature and the governor together, we will have, hopefully, I'm just praying that this works out tomorrow, something that everybody can agree to, again, work together and get funding to our schools that will stabilize our taxes so people can afford to stay here, especially seniors who keep talking about, you know, leaving. You want to age in place, the only way is to have a state government aid increase for our schools. It's just our school funding which would stabilize our taxes. A few million dollars more will help us keep our taxes down. So I urge everyone to encourage all the parties, the governor and the legislative leaders, to get this thing done in the next couple of days so we don't have a state shutdown. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'd just like to remind everyone, and for those of you that don't know, that this Thursday, the 28th of June at 12 noon, the Essex County will be doing a ribbon cutting in Glenfield Park at the Wally Choice Community Center, which has recently been totally renovated, new kitchen, new everything. And, and we're really excited about it. The Essex County Park is housed in Montclair's fourth ward. They're going to do the ribbon cutting just in time for the beginning of Montclair Grassroots. For those of you that don't know, Montclair Grassroots has been in the township for, I think they're celebrating their 50th anniversary as well, under the leadership of Mr. and Mrs. Wally Choice. And at 12 noon, if you're around, come on over, take a look at the improvements. They did a facelift outside, new landscaping and inside as well. And so I'm really, really excited about that and looking forward to that. Also, if some of you don't have plans already for your children, we have openings in our summer camps here in the township. So you're not too late, you're not left out. And some of the other great choices in town as well. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Oh, I also just want one thing. You have the name. So I talked to one of the people that owns a costume store, for any of my council colleagues that are interested in dressing up in the flavor of the Montclair's 150th at 220 Bloomfield Avenue. The person that volunteered and gave Mr. Gill the costumes when they did their celebration down there is also volunteering to offer us different costumes. And so I'm going to pass out the contact information for that individual in case anyone wants to get some costumes. I know Robin and I are going to dress in the attire and be festive.
Maybe.
Maybe for Rob and me, pretty much for sure. So, yeah, I just wanted to let you guys know. I was thinking of you as well when I went in there to check out the costumes. Don't be left out, guys.
Thank you.
What's the temperature going to be?
Councilman Spiller?
Yes, thank you. Just quickly, again, a thank you to all of you for the position of deputy mayor. And also wanted to say it was wonderful joining so many of you when we were able to see the animal shelter reopen. It's really great work going on over there by a lot of people, a lot of staff members, certainly a lot of volunteers in the community. It was great to see everybody really be so successful, be so happy with the success of finally getting that thing open, finally getting the renovations done, which were needed, of course, after the fire. Certainly, you got a chance to walk through and see all the animals there, potential future pets waiting for adoption. So I would encourage anyone to go over there. I will tell you that if you do walk through once, there's a good chance that you're going to walk home with a pet because they are really, really cute. But, but again, kudos to everyone for making sure that project got done. And it's great to see that the animals, once again, have the facilities that they need. And the volunteers and staff members there also have what they need to make sure those animals are adopted quickly. So, great to see. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Lott.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Schleger. Two things. First off, I wanted to thank Rafael Marzullo, aka Lello, for the invitation for the mayor and I on Sunday, for the mass and procession and then picnic afterwards in honor of Saint Vito, who is the, I believe, Aquilonia, patron state of Aquilonia. It was a wonderful event, well attended. Thank you again for the invitation, your hospitality and for making us honorary members of the group. It means a great deal to me as an Italian-American. So I thank you. The next first ward community meeting will be this Thursday, the 28th, 7:30 to 9:00, at the Bellevue Avenue Library Branch. I lost track on how many we have. We've had a lot. I know it's over 20. I just don't remember the exact number. But I look forward to seeing many of you there. We've always had a great attendance, good conversation. And I thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mayor Jackson, you're good. Everybody, Rich?
Yes, very briefly, the bulk of us attended the graduation, which was a little toasty. But when the sun went down, it was great. And I really admire, I really thank Paul Fishman for a very excellent graduation speech. And the, and the, the students also gave very nice speeches, too. But Paul's was particularly on point. And Bob would appreciate the sense of, was, you gotta vote.
Right. On that note, I would also like to bid a very, very fond farewell to Principal James Earl of Montclair High School. It was his last commencement. He's been with us for eight years. I had the pleasure of working with him indirectly, but worked with him for seven of those eight years. And he is just, he was just a great, in my view, a great principal. He did a lot for that school, for the students, for the faculty and for our town in general. And, and I wish him the best of luck as he goes to be an assistant superintendent, which is really quite...
West Windsor?
West Windsor, Plainsboro, West Windsor, perhaps?
Combined district.
It is. And I want to thank James Earl for all his, for all his service to our town. So, thank you.
I think now I can adjourn the meeting?
No, we have a second.
We have a second.
Read that, read that.
I think it's my last night here. Okay. Where Section 8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231, PL 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting of certain circumstances. Whereas this public body's opinion of such circumstances presently exist, now therefore be resolved by the council of the township of Montclair, the County of Essex, that, which one do I, the public shall be excluded of discussion of action upon the, here and after specified subject matters. The general nature of the subjects matters to be discussed on its personnel. We do not anticipate that the matters discussed will be made public. Resolution shall take effective immediately.
Deputy Mayor, I'm sorry to interrupt. You should add potential litigation, please.
Okay. And, okay, personnel and potential litigation.
Thank you.
Okay. This resolution shall take effective immediately. I so move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Break, break.